Good afternoon. First on the study session agenda is the Midlands Humane Society. Lynda?
Hi, I'm Lynda Kemp, Chair of the Board with Midlands Humane Society and for the record, 1020 railroad avenue, Suite A, CP. And Nikki Kirkshank, our Executive Director, is also here if there are any questions on anything. I wanted to start out by saying we really value our relationship with the city and the way that we've been able to take animal welfare to a whole new level in this community because together that's really made a big difference. And also, we understand that the city has significant budget constraints this year. We're really aware of that. I have a financial nonprofit background, I get it. We've been talking for months about putting in a proposal for an increase, an adjustment to our rate, and I think you have something in your packets related to that, is that correct? But we've, after a lot of conversations, we are deferring that request until next year because we do understand the budget constraints. I do want to say a few things if you don't mind though, because I think it's important for the council to understand why this came about to begin with. The original per capita rate, because for the background, the city pays a per capita rate for the population for the sheltering services we provide. That was established back in 2010 before MHS existed, you know, seven years ago, kind of in a vacuum, and in our opinion, it was really underestimated. From the day we opened, we felt that it was underestimated. When we looked at animal controls expenditures for the last year that they operated, which was 2014, they spent about $313,000 if you combine the staffing and the facility and the animal care costs. If you take just the animal care and the facility costs, those hard direct costs, that's $52,000 a year. And I think it's safe to assume by outsourcing to MHS that we would spend something equivalent to that, if not for no other reason, inflation. So if you take that $52,000 and you subtract it from the annual amount we're receiving at the $1.25 per capita rate, which is about $77,500 if you round it, if you take that $52,000 from there, that leaves $25,500 a year for us to provide staff support for caring for animals, cleaning up after animals 365 days a year, plus six days a week of intakes, processing, adoptions, returns to owners, court mandated holdings, bike quarantines, et cetera. So I think it's, I think it's easy to see from our side of the story why there's a shortfall there, and that's why we came back and we've been planning to make this request. But, oh yes, and the contract only allows us to come after 24 months of operations, and that was as of January 1st, so here we are. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure that the council does understand that, we appreciate our relationship, we're not trying to be greedy, we're not asking the council to fund our growth, we've had a lot of growth. We're just asking for something that is more in line with what I think the spirit of the contract originally was, which is to outsource, not necessarily spend as much as you were spending before, but also pay a fee that's reasonable for us to be able to provide those services. So, anyway, I won't take up any more of your time unless, are there questions?
Any questions for Lynda?
I guess we can go ahead and take care of this portion of the agenda if that's acceptable.
Yeah.
So just to recap, you said that it was originally the desire to request the increase in per capita from, I believe, $1.25 up to $2. And that you liked to defer that until, until some point future in time because of the current budget situation. So when, when do you intend to come back and, and I guess modify, request a modification of the agreement?
Well, it's our understanding that we would do that during the next budget cycle, and believe me, we'd really like to be doing it this year, but like I say, we, we understand that's a nonstarter, so we would be looking at the next budget cycle.
Okay. In reviewing the 2010 agreement between the county, the city, and then the Humane Society, notice that the agreement provided for the county and the city to make a contribution for the construction of the, of the new facility there that's now operational. And that the city transferred, I believe, three payments adding up to 1.5 million. Were all those payments made?
Yes, they were.
And what sort of payments did you receive from the county?
Well, we didn't receive anything prior to this contract that was just signed. They are transferring $100,000, that's restricted for capital improvements.
And that was the $100,000 that they received from Sire?
Right.
Okay.
We don't have that in our possession yet, but that's part of the agreement.
Okay. In addition to the $1.5 million, there is also an agreement that you would be able to use the, that property that's owned by the City of Council Bluffs, and that you would be able to lease it, I guess, for a de minimis value. And, and that has, has taken place. Has the county contributed anything to the, to the real estate effort?
No.
So, so the city's contribution, you're estimating under this, this particular arrangement for services, seen an estimate that the city would be paying roughly $77,000 per year, and the county would be paying $72,000 per year, roughly.
Roughly, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I point out something on the, the capital contributions? Because that's something we took into consideration, because we're talking about two different situations. We feel that a reasonable timeframe to amortize the building is 30 years, that's what we're depreciating it for, for accounting purposes. So, and part of the agreement is that if, you know, the HVAC goes out or whatever, MHS is responsible for those improvements. So if we take the 1.5 million and we amortize it over 30 years, and then take it into the population, that's about 81 cents per capita. So we did take that into consideration when we were looking at the numbers. Now, the $100,000 from the county, of course, is much less. And when you take that over 30 years and then put it into their population, it's 14 cents. So they essentially put our contractor paying $3, plus then we take the 14 cents, right? And then the city is paying $1.25, and then the 81 cents, which comes to, what is that, 206? So there's still, you know, we did take that into consideration when we were looking at this, to make sure that there wasn't something out of balance.
So when we're paying $1.25, the county's paying over $3, right?
Right. And if you take the, the building into consideration, you know, it's still, it's not like it's way out of whack, yeah. Any questions on the lease or anything?
No, one of the, just for kind of clarification purposes, it said that they could only come to us every two years, and I gave my interpretation that we want to do an increase, less than two-year increments, but if, because of the, the current situation and tight funding for the city, that, that didn't then preclude them from coming back a year from now and saying, in other words, they don't have to wait two years unless, I mean, it's your decision, but I felt that the two-year exemption from asking for an increase was applicable if they got an increase.
So, so then it's envisioned that this is pretty much a one-year agreement, or?
Well, there is no change to the existing agreement, is?
Well, there would be if, well, that's true, to, to the existing agreement dating back to 2010, I guess what I'm saying is, is if they came back after we passed the next budget and seek, seek an increase, then we're in effect entering into a new agreement.
It can be added as an addendum to the current agreement and changing the terms of the current agreement in that one area without a whole new lease period or a whole new contract period.
Well, I, I understand, but we're still changing the agreement after a very short period of time, and so...
Also?
Somewhat because that we're asking, I mean, it's, it's for our benefit though, right? I mean, that's what, kind of, because we don't have the ability to do it this year.
And they can make the case next year as to whether that increase is necessary, it can be debated at that time, but since they're not bringing it forward, to me, their, their two-year window doesn't close for another two years since they didn't make the request.
And that's been written into the agreement as it's presented to the council? Page two.
Yeah, there's, yeah, that's not a suggestion that they're precluded from doing so, I just wanted some clarity on where we are now fiscally and where I think we might be going fiscally within the next, in the next year, that's solely my point.
I, I think on that, that, that is a good point, and I would imagine that the Humane Society would be aware that of, of tight times, and it's, it's unlikely that this will be the only year, we can, we can be hopeful, but it's unlikely that the budgetary picture will look that much better in a year's time. But I'm open to hearing, you know, looking to how things actually occur over the next year, and, and looking to you to make your, your opinion known, bearing in mind that probably the financial picture of the city won't be a great deal better in a year's time and could potentially be worse. Particularly, we're, we're subject to a lot, a lot of, I think a lot of times, just so folks are aware, that a lot of times, we, we have very little control over, in the big picture, over the amount of money available to us to spend. We, we do have a fair amount of control over what, what does come to us, but we have a lot of so-called mandates that state, and sometimes depending on if the money's coming from the federal government, a lot of restrictions, and sometimes the money is promised and then doesn't come. And so we're, we're facing some potential situations there, a lot of choice, difficult choices to be made at all sorts of levels of government. So I, I think it's fair to say we don't want, I'm, I'm open to hearing it next year, but I, I think I'd be less than fair with you if I didn't say that I, I don't expect it to be much better, just so you're aware. I, I just don't see us having a great deal of, of money for a while.
Okay.
Just, that's my perspective, I think it's fair to point that out to you now.
Any other questions for Lynda?
This makes me wonder if it's in our best interest to defer.
You know, and again, speaking for myself, you, you, I highly doubt you, you would get anything additional this year. Speaking for myself, I just don't think we have the money.
And that's what we've been advised.
And, you know, and, and I appreciate the county pays a lot more per, per animal, though we did pay a lot more upfront than the county, and there's the time value of the money, which I think is what my colleague Al was, was alluding to, that I would like to see a bit more contribution from, from them frankly, but especially now, earlier in the deal. But, but no, I'm open to the idea, but I, I just don't, I just don't see a great change, so I don't want you to get the impression that we're promising, by any stretch of the imagination, that we would, we would agree to an increase next year of, or of any size. I, I just don't know, I doubt it, speaking for myself. And I just think it's fair to tell you that.
I appreciate, appreciate the information.
All right, thank you.
Um, Ned, I need to know, do you need us here tonight for questions? Do you need us to come back?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
I, I don't think so, thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're certainly welcome to attend, to be clear, you know.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Deborah Peterson, I've worked with the city and the Humane Society, working out the terms of this lease and this operating agreement, and just so it's clear, this is something that's kind of been in the works for two years to get the document on paper, so it, it's not just going to be a one-year agreement, it kind of takes care of what we've done. And one other thing from the county standpoint too, is that the city does have the right to use and do the lease office space and the garage space and that kind of thing, and we do not provide that to the county. So just so you're clear on that. And if you have any questions, or you want to come out and tour the facility anytime, just let them know. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Second item is review agenda. Anything on the consent agenda?
In, in talking about how tight the, the budget is, I know, I know we've pushed back this library improvement before. I did not, I don't believe I saw an exact number of what this is gonna cost them.
Oh, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars, but it's, is a general obligation bond, it doesn't come out of the, doesn't come out of the budget it was bonded for, and that was one of the purposes, we told the company that bought the bond that we were going to use it for, so.
I vaguely recall, I think you're right on the $200,000 for the bonding, then there's another source of funding, I think, against that CIP item, and I thought that the total cost of the project was $400,000.
Yeah, it could be, but I think it was all, when we moved the, the bonding around so that we could get, do justice to the right terms, but bonds that, oh, when do you want to step up your mouth and terms to me, but it, some bonds were taxable and non-taxable, and, and so...
I just want, with, with it being tight, as everybody's talked about already today, I just want to make sure.
You just can't take bonding money that, that people lent us money for a project and throw it into the general fund, which is what we'd be doing.
If we didn't.
If you, if you took the bonding proceeds and...
We'd have to give it back.
Use it for salaries.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just want to make sure I understand what, and I'm definitely not saying it's not needed, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, this money is obviously where it's coming from, why.
Yeah, yeah, it's not coming out of the general fund, it's coming out of bonding.
Yep, and I, I know we've pushed it back before, and it's obviously needed.
We, we have, I think it was, I think it was '98, the original carpet, much of it is.
Yeah, I think Kathy's here.
Ah, Kathy's back there, Kathy, might, could you, is it? I, I believe, as I understand it, except in some of the, the main areas where, of course, there'd be, you know, significant amount of the traffic, yeah. But as I understand it, and, and having been in there myself, I imagine all of us have it, I think they're doing a pretty good job of trying to keep it up, but, but at some point, you, you got to have it. And I, and I don't hear you saying it's, it's not needed, and I, I take your point.
Yeah, I just want to make sure with...
Some, some of it though goes back nearly 20 years, doesn't it?
Kathy Rieger, Council Bluffs Public Library, yes, it was 19 years ago that the carpet was placed in the building. We have about 1,000 people a day come in the library, and we have done a good job keeping it clean, but it's to the point where there are places, the new carpet will be carpet tiles, so when things happen, we can pull them up and replace them, so the new carpet should last probably even longer than what we have now.
Will it include any extra?
Yes.
For, for that purpose?
Yes, right. The biggest issue with that is storing it.
Indeed.
But we have some ideas for that. Sometimes when it's stored, it doesn't hold up well, so.
We've encountered that, just, I mentioned that because of, just of other projects, for example, when we did the downtown, a lot of the streetscape improvements, and partly, I, I, well, actually, I think to a large degree, it was due to, to funding, understandable, but we, we didn't have, for example, replacements, so when something breaks, like a stop sign, literally when a stop sign gets knocked over, we don't have any of the ones to match it. I'm not sure if it could, well, I mentioned it, some price it could be matched, but not at any reasonable price. So having that sort of thing is kind of one of those penny wise type situations.
And there are a couple rooms that we're not doing right away, but we will buy carpet to do them. The Commission Business Bureau room, we won't do that right away, but we'll buy enough to, to do it, as well as the IT area.
We have a fair number of, of people from the county, including cities, that pay and do, so their, their, their residents can use our library, don't we?
We do, we do.
I can remember, I spent a large amount of my time in my childhood in Underwood, and I remember there was a cooperative agreement so that my, my folks could take me to the library and council.
It hasn't increased since you were a child.
You know, that's true, that's true, and that's something we should look at.
We should.
Yes.
Let me know how you want to do that.
I'll make a bunch of my family mad, but so be it, I think we need to look at it. Yeah, you're right, it hasn't gone up.
It literally is a couple hundred thousand dollars, is.
From the cities that don't have libraries, that probably...
Yeah, and the county.
The county is over, they do raise theirs every year, and it's about 290,000 from the county. The cities without libraries probably totals maybe $6,000.
Yeah, and I, and I can remember as well, again, having spent much of my childhood in, in Underwood, that, that was when there were, and I, I remember, there were 385 if you counted my family, and now they're pushing 1,000 in the community.
Yeah.
Which is great for them in our county, not so good for our agreement.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do think we ought to look at that, thank you for reminding me.
Yes, I'll use you as my spokesperson.
Uh, please, please do, please do. I, I think if we're gonna look, I, and one of the reasons I brought that up is we have other people in the county paying to use it, but should, they, they should be paying a fair ra, a fair, fair freight.
Yep. Thanks Kathy.
Thank you Kathy, thank you.
Other questions on the consent agenda?
Speaking of the budget and, and the CIP, have those been finalized? Are, are those now available?
Yes.
Final form?
Yeah, they're online.
Yes, they are, okay, somebody asked that today.
Went on today.
They went on today, okay, so you can get on the city website today.
They're on the city website today.
And do we need separate copies? Have they been marked for changes, or?
We're not anticipating any changes at this point, but...
So what we have is, is...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, that makes it easy.
Yep. Anything else on the consent agenda? Anything on the public hearings? Resolutions?
I have one on I, but anybody have something before that?
Uh, let's see. Yes, I could. On resolution 1738, which I believe is 9G, I think that's the proposed age mark facility, and I was wondering why the, the increase in the term of tax relief from, it's originally set at three years and now it's moved to four, and I'm just curious as to why that's, that's the case.
Under the urban revitalization program, they have the ability to choose what the tax abatement schedule is, and they are assessed as residential.
And so they're not getting more, they're just spreading it out over a longer timeframe?
Okay.
I, I had the same question on the, on 10 years, on the other two, how did we come up with the 10?
Sure, accord, by chapter 4 of the Iowa code, we are required to, any benefits that we give in an urban revitaliza, urban revitalization area have to be uniform throughout the city, so you can't say we're gonna set up a different schedule for the gun school project versus a project that would be in the Hawkeye Heights area. So it has to be uniform in each of those districts. So we, according to state law, we do what we, what is allowed there, where you can do 100% for three years, you can do a sliding scale for 10 years, those are for the commercial properties, and then for residential, you can do 100% for four years, and if you're doing mul, if you're doing rehab, residential rehab, it can be 100% for 10 years.
So if you wanted 10 years, you get 30% a year? Or you can take it all upfront, it just kind of how it fits into your cash flow, it's a decision.
Right, and each of the applicants choose what is best for their business, it's not anything that we say you have to, but the, the terms are set up ahead of time, and they're uniform.
They could say, I want it all right upfront, the first three years, 100%, or I choose any one of the following prorated options over 10 years.
Well, and I ask because, and I'm not suggesting that there's, there's anything untoward in, in the practice. At times when we've seen the initial paperwork, you know, proposing a, a project, and they're going through the, the process, that they'll suggest a, a threshold dollar amount that they're looking for in terms of different forms of, of assistance. And then as we march through the pro, the process, that very often seems to increase or change. And so I'd kind of like to be more aware of what they believe the changing business aspects are, and why we think it's, it's appropriate to, I guess, make adjustments to the amount of assistance that they're receiving, does that make sense?
Well, we are not making adjustment, adjustments to the amount of assistance that they are receiving, and this is also very different, this is urban revive versus urban renewal.
I understand.
Urban revive, they are not paying any of those taxes, so urban renewal, you know what those dollar amounts are, we have separate agreements that talk about the terms, and those are the ones that are more negotiated versus what these particular urban revive projects are allowed to do.
I guess what I'm trying to tactfully say, maybe a tad more definition within the, the staff package might help make, make this a little bit more clear for everybody.
And you're looking for the initial estimates that they had in?
Well, I, no, I, I have those because I, I keep the paperwork as we march through various bits of the, of the process. And then when, when there are changes that, that are made, and, and we're saying, you know, that here's the recommendation and why it's changing, it's just helpful to, to have that background knowledge as to why it's changed.
Well, I will go back and review that, because we, the, the schedule would have been set in the very beginning. Nothing would have changed as far as what benefits they are able to receive.
Okay, and I'm just saying, you know, that early on, they said that we anticipate asking for three years, and it's not a big deal, I'm just saying...
Well, the difference in that is the assessor says that they are not assessed as commercial, they are assessed as residential. The commercial gets 100% for three years, this is a residential, they get 100% for four years.
Understood.
So it's not that they made the choice, it's that the way it's assessed made, the decision.
Assessed as multi-residential, I think is the technical.
And that's based on a change from the way the state looks at multifamily properties, and that happened a couple of years ago, that they changed that, so.
And when you say they get it, I mean, it's not, we don't have to give them this tax abatement, correct? I mean, you said, like, what you said is they get, I just want to make sure what...
Well, you have already approved the establishment of an area, you've already approved the intent to most of these developers by establishing that area. They do have to come in and apply every year, but that's because they are certifying what their costs are. So when you establish that area, I think that you are making a commitment to these developers, but that perhaps would be a, a question better answered by legal.
Well, Dick, I should give you the legal bit. I mean, do you have to agree from upfront? I don't think we have to agree to it upfront.
I mean, once we've, if we decided we didn't want an urban revive there, we didn't like the purpose we were putting in place, the council has all those abilities to either quash it at that level, but once you've set it in place, and they follow all the rules that we've established for this benefit, you pretty much have to let them have it.
Comes more of a contractual once we start.
And then while you're up, Brenda Rogers is asking me about the London Place, 100% for 10 years, is that correct?
Yes, it's because it's multifamily rehab.
It just doesn't, it seems crazy to me, we're talking about a budget crunch, and this new development for 10 years is gonna pay no property taxes, it just, it just seems counterproductive to me. I don't, I don't understand it at all.
And those properties were also not generating any property tax revenues prior to the initiation of this project.
Right, and to me, they could when they open, instead of 10 years later, I guess is what I'm trying to wrap my head around, I know I don't.
Well, it's an incentive.
And I know this was all done, you know, 2014, 2015, before I was on council, so I, I wasn't involved in the, in the urban revitalization plan, but...
It's an incentive for development. It's an incentive for development.
I, I, again, I, maybe it's just my business mind. If, if it doesn't make sense, why would you even build it? I mean.
Well, well, part of, I, I, I totally hear what you're saying and, and, and in a perfect world, I, I would agree that I don't understand why government's involved in any of it, frankly, at any level. But, but here's the problem we've got. The problem we've got, uh, there, there are forty-nine other states, including one right next to us with eleven times more people.
I understand.
Uh, and city-wise, that they do it. And we don't, well, and then the other diff- the other, the only other thing I'd say is if you don't incentivize building in your existing areas, like, I, I believe the rationale, so whether you agree with it or not, I, I think it's a good faith, uh, debate. But the ra- the ra- the rationale for, for rehab having more is that then you're gonna go into areas of communities that all other things being equal, the, the market, there's, there's no way that somebody in business who would wanna make money, which of course is what you need to do in business, and nothing wrong with that, uh, wanting to go in and build something that if you can build on new green space ground in a part of town with rising property values and looks like it's on the up, it's going up and people are wanting to go there who have the money to go there. But if you don't incentivize building in the parts of town that are older, usually a lot.
Yeah.
Have problems. Uh, no disrespect to them, uh, many of us, including me, live in, in a part, in an older part of the community, and I know you do too. Uh, and so the, the question is how do you incentivize, or should you, so that those areas continue to have stuff built? So you try to find a way to make up the cost difference between what it would have cost to do in an area where it would be more advantageous to do it versus an area where if you first look at it on paper, you go, I'm never gonna build there. So, so the question comes down to, if you don't incentivize the private market to build there, they're probably not gonna build there. And so then we, we already have roads there, we already have, you know, the, the garbage route even, things, the, the electricity's already there. So that, that's the question. So, you know, do you, should, should you incentivize those? I agree with you, in a perfect world, we shouldn't be incentivizing anything. But the problem is, uh, we're, we're just not, we're just not, we're just not in that world, and so the line becomes in each ca- and just so you know where I'm coming at in them, I don't think every single proposal that comes to us, I don't automatically accept for me, because I think, okay, does this make sense in ten years or whatever?
And you explained it very well.
Okay. Yeah, you're right, it comes down to each individual case. Does, does that one make sense or not?
How do we come up with, and say ten? Can we, can we give them property tax for five years versus ten?
The state ties our hands.
Regulates ten years no matter what.
They give them that, if you have this.
The option or they get, they, no matter what?
If you have an urban revitalization area that this council approved at some point over the years, we don't get to set those terms. The state says that if you're doing multifamily rehab, you know, if you're putting in multifamily, it's considered residential and it's rehab, that's what you're entitled to.
It's all or nothing. So, you know, to a large degree, loc- we don't have much local control. We can, we can give it or we, or we can't. Yeah, and that's the tough part.
So I just wanna understand it, you know.
Oh, absolutely. And that, that's the thing about it that stinks frankly.
I mean, it's real tight. We've talked about it again multiple times today. I just wanna understand why they get this versus, you know, and versus not getting it or less time and, and all that, so I just, I just wanna make sure.
Sure, I, I, you know, I'd be with you. I, I, you know, I wish that we'd be trusted with more local control as to be able to make these decisions, like if you wanted to do different parts. 'Cause it seems to me different projects or different regions of the community, some might need more of an incentive than others, depending on what you're building, where you're building, but this, Des Moines doesn't give us that power. And I agree with you, that's, that's stupid.
You're, you're explaining it well, I just, I just wanted to.
No, and, and I agree, we ought to look at.
Clarification and understand why.
Sure.
They were getting what they were getting and.
The, the only other thing too.
Three came all at once, so just.
Sure. The, the other thing I, that, that I'd say in their defense would be, you know, a lot of those, if, if we don't incent them now and, and year eleven from now, they're gonna be paying nothing or relatively little. And at least under this, they're gonna be paying something eventually. I mean, there is some saving grace to that. But just so you know how I look at, look at them over the years, is I try to look at each one from the get-go when it started, starting, and try to think, does this one make sense? And I'd agree, some of them don't make sense and we've, we've denied some of them. Most of them we've, I think it's fair to say, I'd say a majority of them we've gone along with, because if private individuals are willing to put the money up and show us the figures, a lot of times we think it probably has a good shot. But sometimes they don't. I agree with you, we should, we should look at each one.
Understand it better and then you have, I'll explain it well.
Thing that hadn't been mentioned is we do provide then quality housing for a certain aspect of the community that otherwise couldn't afford it.
That's a really good point.
And the incentives are not just for residential, they can be for commercial properties located in the same areas.
Right.
And Roger, you will always see these in clumps because they are required, we are required by law to have them due to the city by February first, and then by March first, we give them to the county. So you will always see them about this time of the year altogether, 'cause they're certifying what their costs were for the year before.
Makes sense. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions on the resolutions?
Uh, just before we get to, uh, item I, thank you for your patience. Just a, a very simple question on, on nine H, the, the, the bid for the West Broadway, renewal program, it fit segment one. And, uh, and I guess I'm, I'm a little bit nervous at, not quite at ease over the fact that we received one bid on that particular project and, and I guess I wanted to ask you, you know, what the, what you think the, the factors might have been contributing to that and give me some reassurance for the, for the future, 'cause at, uh, at six point one million dollars, we're gonna run out of Schlitz before this is done.
Uh, great question. Um, we thought prior to the bid opening, we would receive two bids. Again, we all know this is a very challenging project. It's beyond the capabilities of many contractors or beyond the desire of many contractors that don't wanna take it on.
Interstate projects going on, I get it.
Exactly. So, um, we thought we were gonna get two bids, we actually only received the one. Feedback from other contractors was, again, this is a nasty project, um, there's a lot of risk to this type of project, given the penalties we included, the timeline that we included. Um, if something were to go wrong, you know, it's, it could cost them money. Um, it's a lot to take on. Um, some of them weren't willing, because there's a lot of different components to the work, it's not just paving, it's not just utility work, it's, has many aspects to the project. Some contractors weren't willing to give up a superintendent, knowing that they were only doing thirty percent of the work and a lot of the rest is subwork. Again, just because of the complexity of the job, that's the nature of this project.
Okay.
I hope, uh, the current contractor does really well on this project, makes money, gets the project done, because if he finds out that this is not a project he wants to do, I don't know where we look in the future. We're certainly gonna continue to, to address lessons learned from this project and incorporate those into future contract documents, encourage other bidders to participate, but, uh, obviously, this is a big capable contractor and if he's not successful, then we're, we're gonna have challenges in the future.
Matt, the, we've been very clear from the very beginning of this, that you have to make accommodation, keep those businesses open and keep that traffic flowing. Did that impact these bids at all? 'Cause it's not something I can see changing through the, any of the segments, so.
Right, a- absolutely. I mean, all the contractors we spoke to mentioned that, that that, it breaks up their flow and their ability to get a lot of work done. And we've known that from the beginning and it was a concession we've agreed to. So I, you're right, I don't see that changing unless something drastic in public opinion changes or the businesses along there. If they think, if they, if we go through phase one and they decide it was very painful, even with access, that maybe they'd like to see it shortened with less access, there's that opportunity, but we don't know at this point. Fortunately, we were within one percent of the bid, or one percent of the estimate, so I feel like the, the number is a good number.
Appreciate the candor. Item I.
Yeah, I was like, you may as well just stay up here. Okay, I have a question. I don't know if anybody else has been contacted, I'm sure you probably have, but I got a few calls. I know there's kind of a, I don't know what you wanna call it, like a group that are getting together that don't want the medians that are gonna come to us, I think, at the next meeting. I don't know if they've already asked to be on the agenda, but I know there's a group. They said they're gonna ask to be on the next meeting.
Have not, but.
But they're working on trying to be.
They.
Right, I mean.
They contacted me and wanted me to pull this off the agenda, said that they're gonna bring a petition to the meeting on the twenty-seventh. Um, I told them, first of all, the agenda had been published, and so I really didn't have the authority at this point to remove it. It was on this morning was the request and and I talked to Matt, said that, uh, this is to hire HGM as the, uh, to do the engineering on the project. They are not gonna be drawing medians tomorrow. They, you know, they need to do utilities locations and easement locations and property lines and all that work, which is what I told Jeff Ballinger and that, uh, that that would probably take them in the next fall, and so I don't know that it makes much difference if we delay it today for two more weeks or not, but as I told them, that's a decision the council makes, not me, so.
I guess my question is, if we delay it by two weeks, is it gonna have a huge impact? I don't think we should delay it much more than that, because I know at one point they'd ask to wait till like March or something. I mean, I don't think we need to move this out, I don't know.
Well, wouldn't it, to be frank, wouldn't moving it only make a difference if there were votes to change whether they're? I appreciate they don't like medians. I think, just to speak in broad brush, uh, I, I believe there, if I'm not mistaken, I, I believe there's three votes to go forward with that phase two, so delaying it, I doubt there's no intervening election, so I, I doubt that would change the result any. What good does it really do? I'll just be very blunt. But it doesn't seem, if it's not gonna change the result, then we ought to just get on with it.
Well, and my point was even if it did change, the result, in two weeks, you can change the result and it won't have any effect on what HGM's gonna start doing.
And that was gonna be, yeah, it was kinda where, yeah, what kinda timeframe, or really, 'cause I mean, they could, it could change, 'cause we said it's a working document, so in theory, if as a whole, they decided, okay, media, I mean, I'm not saying this is gonna happen or not gonna happen, either way, in theory, it could change, because we said that's kind of a working document we went through before, but.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess, yeah, that was kinda my question. What exactly?
Terry, do, is, is two weeks gonna affect you guys?
Doesn't matter.
Well, what does, what will change though in two weeks? I guess the, the flip side of that.
Right, if, if there's a group of people that wanna be heard by us, what, what, if it doesn't, if it's not gonna hurt them, it doesn't hurt, Matt doesn't have an objection, it doesn't hurt to listen, for anybody else to listen either.
And I agree, but one doesn't really have anything to do with the other one, because once they get those plans together, it'll be just like last time, those come to the council. So we don't have anything before us this week or in two weeks, because it hasn't been designed yet. So even if you come forward in two weeks with a petition against medians, we don't have anything before us right now that would even tell you where, you know, what it looks like or what the design is. So you're gonna have that, the time to have that discussion, in my opinion, is when the plans come forward, because then if the plans come forward and let's say for some reason there were three votes and there weren't any medians, there are gonna be other issues. You know, if they don't like something else, then we're, you know, this is about hiring an engineer to do the design work, which ninety-five percent of has nothing to do with medians.
Correct.
I think the time to discuss the medians is when they bring us those and we're voting whether to accept them or not.
There's also the issue of precedent. Uh, I, I worry that, you know, when, when something comes up that that a lot of people want to speak to, we, we have a standard process in place. We, we have many votes, perhaps sometimes I'd like to think we have too many stages of, you know, there's a notice of intent to do something, there's, there's a notice of, here's, we're really going to do it. Sometimes we have a ridiculous number of levels of approval to, to do even the smallest projects frankly. So, and I, and I know, I think we've all occasionally expressed words to that effect on something, at least one project or another. And so, you know, that piece is up tonight, it was published tonight, and if people wanna come speak to it, they have every right. And I want them to come speak to it, but, but delaying it, if, if we start doing that, we're going to start delaying lots of stuff. And I, and I appreciate the vast majority of things are not controversial, so I'm not saying that suddenly a hundred percent of things are gonna be punted. But I'd say every month, there's at least one or two things that somebody doesn't like. And it's, and they have every right not to like the proposal. And there's prob- and we're probably among the people who don't like, I know I am, one or two things a month probably. But, but, but that discussion oughta happen. I, I, I just, the only, the point of delaying something is if there's a chance that something's gonna happen in two weeks, that would actually change the result.
I guess my position.
And I just don't see it here.
If, if, if you don't know what they're gonna present to you, you don't know if you're gonna change your minds.
Well, I can tell you what they're gonna present to you. Go online, look at the petition, it's there.
Well, and what's gonna, am I gonna change my mind and say, no, we're not gonna let a contract for, uh, the design of segment two, 'cause that's what we're voting on?
Well, but there is a median in segment two, whether, whether that's what they're gonna work on.
Median in section two in the master plan, but I haven't gotten a design back showing anything on the medians, I don't even have a design plan back. It took, does it take, how long does it take? Like, almost a year? When, when would we get this back to vote on? When would the plans be done and drawn up and something in front of us to, um, vote for, to accept the plan?
End of the month, Terry.
It would be this fall. Now, that, that would be the, actually, the first step when, if we were to hire HGM, would be to develop a project schedule. I would guess if we follow something similar to last year, we're talking about October, November, before the plans would come back to the council. To me, we could begin the, the engineering work. The engineer works for the city, who works for the council. We're gonna start the process. If later you have discussions about a median and you decide they are or aren't part of the project, segment two, we can direct the engineer to develop the plans in that manner. In the meantime, we have a lot of work to get done and I would recommend that we move forward with it, unless you have an issue with hiring HGM as the engineer, as you said, there, there are separate issues.
That's what we're voting on, denying.
You know, I think a lot of people are just seeing this on here and panicking that that means, and that's not the case, but I didn't know, like, yeah, we're in the process, does it all kinda?
Right.
And nothing precludes them from coming, which I told Jeff, bring your petition in two weeks and
Of course.
At the end of the meeting, you're more than welcome to present it. Each person that comes with you has up to five minutes to speak on it if they want to. And there's plenty of time to make decisions on inclusion or exclusion of medians.
Well, I get, if nothing's gonna come back to us till October, then they get started on it. So they've done it, let's say it has medians, we decide it doesn't in October, then they gotta redo it.
They just, they just make that portion.
The assumption at this point is we have a master plan that includes them. But if this body wants to have discussions anytime between today and when we bring the plans back, you can direct us otherwise, and we will make those adjustments sooner than next October, November.
When you bring the plans back, even if it was that far into it, we could say, no, no medians, and they would take those out of the plan. It wouldn't change the schedule by construction.
I would say that's what I mean, it wouldn't be easy. Well, but, but the additional cost too, exactly.
Then I would suggest that we have that.
Alls I'm saying is that works happening in the next two weeks, so.
I, well, I just don't see, unless there are votes, sufficient votes to change the master plan, I think we ought to proceed with hiring the engineer.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you this too, I, I had a call that, and I, th- this didn't get put out to bid, we're just, HGM has been involved the whole time, so they're gonna get segment two as well. And I know there's been a history, obviously, they've been working on it for a long time. You know, but not, and the person that called me said, well, if we're just gonna give HGM three, four, and five, they can charge whatever they want, they're gonna get it anyway, they don't care. So they asked why we weren't putting it out to bid.
Well, we, we never but bid engineering services, we would select the most qualified firm, and then it's up to me and the mayor ultimately to negotiate the contract, so we're not gonna accept whatever they want for fees. And if we bid it, they could charge whatever they want if they were selected as the most qualified firm. So I don't know that a so- a solicitation process would dictate the fees a, a company would charge. It's up to us to recognize what the fees should be and to go, negotiate effectively.
And we talked about twenty percent, right?
We brought in multiple firms that, that were involved in it, and so it wasn't just, hey, HGM, here's another deal for you.
And remember too, bear, bearing in mind, and, and this, this was a, a little before your time, but bear in mind that we used to not have an official policy from this body and the mayor at all.
Professional services.
Yeah, for professional services, so we would be presented, and I'm not saying they didn't, the department didn't do their due diligence and just randomly picked people or just picked their friends or something, not saying that at all. I'm just saying though, we, we have a, we have a three-tiered process in place, and this is by far high, expensive enough that it's in the third tier, where a lot more of those formalities are, are there. But I, I'm comfortable with the fact that, um, But I, I'm comfortable with the fact that, that process, and that's where in those staff packets, I do think, and Al's brought this up a lot, and I, and I agree with him that, in, in the packet, you know, the more information they give us about how they followed the process, and what they looked at, and what they did, is very helpful, and I think that allows us to perform our, our oversight, to look at it, to make certain that they aren't just picking the same people. It, it's, even though having done part of a, a multi-segment thing is a factor that weighs in your favor, and I think that's, makes sense, but, you know, it's not the case that one company's getting all the, the engineering work.
I know it's not, we see a million.
Though, there are some people who think that, maybe there was in the past, I think there was an argument about that, and people can have opinions about it, and I know some were sore at me for what I thought, but.
Well, it sounds like people are still confused that we let our engineering services, our professional services, forbid, because if they're calling asking why we didn't get bids, well, there's probably still some confusion about the difference between professional services, per se, and, you know, bid contracts, so.
We don't.
That might be the better solution, is directing them to the professional services policy that's in place.
And it's not just HGM, it's HDR and HGM.
And one of, one of the things too, with professional services, you're not, you're not buying paper, you're, you're buying the design of a bridge, or like, the other thing that we do a lot of professional services for, if we need outside legal counsel, you know, you, you, your first factor when, when deciding who's gonna build a, a bridge, or who's gonna represent you in court, isn't price. Now, price is important, but, but on, on these sorts of things, we, we don't first look to price, because you could hire the cheapest lawyer out there, they might be the best, they might not. And so your, your first factor, or even more important thing to most people when you drive over a bridge, I don't know if I necessarily just wanna go on who could do it the cheapest.
Right.
Yeah.
I understand, I just.
Yeah, just so you kinda know the history.
They called and asked me, and I said I would ask the question, and, and, you know, just wanna understand why, you know, and I asked this at the last council meeting about, you know, because they did Phase One, they get Phase Three and Four and Five, or, you know, different things like that, so I just wanna make sure that, that's, I mean, because it says, you know, from a pre-qualified list, well, then the whole other list is qualified too, so that's why I just wanna make sure that there's obviously weighted factors.
In, in this case, we did, when we put the original request for proposals out, we said that the selected firm may be chosen to do future phases, and that, so they, my recommendation is, they should be selected for Segment Two. I think it's unfair at this point to pass judgment, because we haven't actually built Segment One.
Agreed. And that, that was the other reason why it may be a delay too, we haven't, we said we were gonna learn a whole lot from Phase One.
Yeah.
Hasn't even started, so we can't learn anything yet.
But we did, based on the schedule, we prepared for the whole program, we don't have time to wait, so.
I know.
We, we're building a project, phase, per year.
It is already six years, well, it is already six years, which is gonna be more than long enough, if you ask people.
I agree, and I, I don't wanna delay it, but we did, you know, we're trying to learn from Phase One, it's gonna be hard to do that.
Right, so, I mean, to me, the, the engineering team has delivered everything we've asked them to do, we, we, we set a pretty aggressive schedule, we asked them to put a pretty intense planning document together, they've done all those things that we've asked.
Done a great job, yeah.
We put together a set of contract documents that are probably some of the best we've ever done, based on the, the amount of information conveyed in those documents. I feel like we put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears in those documents. And then we got a bid that was with 1% of the estimate, that, that's pretty, it's hard to argue with any of that stuff, so that's why I'm recommending this. Obviously, if things go off the rails for Segment One, and we're, we're looking at design of Segment Three, we can change teams if we feel that's necessary, but at this point, I have nothing.
And I don't think that's gonna happen, I just wanted to ask the question. Yeah, I think they'll do a great job, I, I definitely didn't wanna say they wouldn't, I just wanted to know.
Yep.
I got asked, so I had asked.
I, I just wanted to reassure you, we're not, we haven't decided that automatically this is phases, or segments one through five have already been decided, it certainly has not.
Understand.
At this point, I'm recommending for Segment Two and Segment Two only.
Right.
Any more questions?
Could I ask, well, actually, on the bridge, could I go to that? Does it, does anyone mind?
Almost.
Almost, sorry, sorry, you were just not quite quick enough. If, if I could go to that, I, I just, just tip my hand a little bit, I, I am very in favor of the concept. I just, I did get a good number of questions, though, from people, and I wonder if you could just briefly speak to the idea. Some people said, well, I'll pick the extreme example, maybe clean the language up just a tad. The road, the road, the roads are, in some spots are in an awful mess, why would we be doing this? And so I, could you just briefly speak to, sometimes it's not as if we have one pot of money for public works projects, and we can, we as a city can decide to spend it on whatever we want, there, the limitations and what can be spent and when. Could you just kinda briefly speak to kinda some of the constraints of, of, of what we're allowed to do with, with that pot of money that goes to anything to do with public works?
Well, I think what I'm hearing you ask is, why now? Why not, why not focus on other priorities rather than this bridge?
Yes.
And the, the cost of it?
Yes.
And I would answer that in, this is a once-in-our-lifetimes, and maybe our kids' lifetime, opportunity. There's a, a lot has happened with a desire to develop the riverfront. In order to do that, we need to be able to travel north and south along the river. This bridge, which is for the railroad, is going to be reconstructed. It will not be reconstructed in the next 100 years if it's done for this project. So if we don't take advantage now, the opportunity's lost, and there probably will not be a way for this road to ever go through this area.
We'd have to tunnel, wouldn't we?
Right, I mean, this is kind of the, the opportunity that presents itself now. Now, this was looked at a few years ago, the cost was much more because of a, a few different reasons, and, and those are details you don't care about, but it was more than three times this cost, and it was determined that that really wasn't reasonable, we didn't have the funds, we couldn't do it. Through additional discussions from the mayor's office to the DOT, et cetera, we've been able to come up with a plan that is what you see in front of you, around $3 million, and with a, a ability to make those payments over an extended period, it seemed like an opportunity that would be hard to just dismiss, and should certainly be brought to you to look at, and I think that's what we're asking you to do.
So construction, wouldn't be initiated until 2019, then we have, is it three or five years to repay them?
Five.
Up to five, I believe.
And then I did speak to the president of Iowa West and said, you know, is there a possibility, maybe we get a no-interest loan if even those five years of payments are too much? And he said, it's certainly something that they would, uh, look at favorably.
And we don't start paying those loans until after it's constructed, or prior to it being constructed?
Well, we, depending on how we work it, we wouldn't pay anything until probably 2020.
It says late 20. It says first payment due late 2018.
Well, they're not even gonna build it till 2019, are they?
No, it's, they're projectively left June of this year. They anticipated that the construction would be completed late 18, so paying, first payment would, from the city would be due to the DOT late 18, early 19.
So, so for other folks, the UP needs to, they're gonna build a new bridge no matter what, and so the, the question is, and please correct me, Greg, if I'm mistaken, the question then is, is while they're building it, do we wanna work with them so that we can have the ability for cars to go under it? Because otherwise, they're gonna construct one that that's not gonna have cars going under it, and it'd be nearly impossible, at any price we could ever pay, to try to fix that bridge after it's built, or to rebuild it before that bridge wears out in 100 years. Is that fair?
Well, yes, I think it's fair to say that any solution that comes back after this bridge is completed, and we figure out a way to put a, a road underneath the tracks, is gonna cost way more than this.
If they'll even let us do it, because it'll be their bridge. The railroad has quite a bit of power.
Well, the DOT's, the DOT's building this bridge for.
Oh, that's a good point. It is a verb for a reason.
Well, Matt mentioned some of the technical details, and I can just imagine how much fun that would be for me to try and figure out, but I took a little Sunday drive and, and drove down and looked at, looked at the bridge from, uh, from the motel parking lot, and sat there for about 15 minutes, just kinda staring at this and trying to figure out, okay, how much of a bridge would they be likely building because of the increase with the interstate project? And I drove over to, to the casino and sat by their security area, and stared off into the area and trying to figure out how far that, that bridge would have to be extended. So just, just eyeballing this, it, it looks like if a, if a road were even feasible, it's extending, it's basically making the bridge at least twice as, as long as what it would otherwise be required, is, am I anywhere in the ballpark?
Well, currently, there's four lanes on the interstate, I believe their bridge is gonna be extended to accommodate six lanes. Our, and I think it's in the packet, our share of the extra beyond what the DOT was building is 45 feet.
It's how much?
45 feet.
45 feet.
So whatever the DOT and, you know, I'm not sure how much, off the top of my head, how far the DOT is extending the bridge for their needs, but our needs, their, their bridge design, to be honest, was almost done, and, and then we came along and said, one more time, can we do this? And, and, so they've, they've got everything on hold, and they've come back and said, we'll extend it 45 feet to accommodate your needs, and.
So we approached them with this idea, I thought it was the other way around.
It was, we approached them initially, at some point, Paul Trambino, the director of the Iowa Department of Transportation, met with Mike Gronstall, and Paul Trambino said to Mike Gronstall, I think your city's making a tragic mistake by not allowing a local access road there. Mike Gronstall called us and said he heard from Paul Trambino that we were making a mistake, and that, and I said, we don't have $10 million, we can't afford to spend $10 million, and Gronstall said, we think we can get it cheaper than that, and maybe at no cost. And then I started calling Trambino to say, hey, Mike Gronstall says that the cost has gone down significantly, maybe nothing. Called him probably four times, he didn't return my call, left him extensive messages why I was calling, so alls he had to do is call and say yes or no. He didn't call, except for one time, when he called and left a message that he called and didn't give any further information, and we started the whole process over, I called four or five more times, and then Scott Shram, who's the new district engineer, called one day and said, Paul Trambino asked me to follow up with you, oh, by the way, you resigned an hour ago. And so, um, the process started over, they said they were gonna design it at a 45-degree slope, if they went a 90-degree slope, it could lower the cost, the estimates are in the neighborhood of $2 million, we put three in here just to be safe, though Greg thinks it's probably somewhere between two and three. But, yeah, the DOT, we talked to them initially at 10 million, they, they talked to Gronstall, neither Trambino or Gronstall are still around to, to really say what that conversation between the two of them were.
So, the, the big difference between why it's not $10 million and why it's under three this time is, as he explained, the, the ends had the sloped embankments on them, you know, how typical bridges from the pier, the abutment are sloped grade. They're gonna carve that out and build a wall.
Okay.
And, and that's why the wall is an extra cost, but that's why the, the number came down so dramatically. Before, they were looking at just another span on the bridge. This isn't really an extra span on the bridge, it's just being designed a little differently with a wall instead of an embankment.
Which saves a lot of money, I imagine, in comparison.
When I was looking, and this may not be fair, be looking for a response from you, Greg, but when I was looking at, at the 2030 plan and other strategic planning documents, I couldn't find a, a reference to building a, a road in that particular areas. Is there some other type of planning document where we've set this out in any sort of detail?
Not formally, no. I, I, you know, this.
Because it goes underneath.
I think timing-wise, we truly are on kinda the cutting edge. This is a, you know, with the Playland development, it's kinda opened up a lot of eyes, there's just a huge metro-wide push to return development to the riverfront, and we've had some discussions with developers and, and kinda played around with envisioning, and I guess if you're envisioning the, the, our Council Plus waterfront redeveloped, a road, there's gotta be a road there somewhere.
Is it fair to say we didn't think we'd be able to do this? We didn't, we didn't, we didn't foresee the possibility of being able to.
Right, I mean, we really didn't plan for a road, because we didn't think it was ever possible to have a road.
And now it is.
It's very possible.
So, so if this is a, if this was a more recent good idea, I guess, do, do we have any sort of idea about the, the costs of acquiring land, doing the engineering, and actually constructing such a road? Do we have any wag as to how long, where it would go, what it would look like, how much it would cost to get the land?
No.
Who owns that?
There, there is no plan.
The casino on the land?
Arizona's there.
Yeah. Arizona's both sides of the track.
This would preserve the option, wouldn't it? It's not committing us to build a road, but this would preserve the option in this century to build a road?
Right.
Okay.
At a cost of $3 million in order to have that future option? Because if, if the road doesn't get built, we don't see that money coming back, do we?
That's true.
And for that matter, I guess if we sign, if we sign the agreement at this point, we've, we've made a commitment then to the state of Iowa to make the five easy payments of $600,000 for five years, so, so I, I guess my, my concern is, we're, we're making, we're, we're making a commitment to spend money that hasn't been obligated yet in a budget. And, and I'm, I'm more than a little bit concerned upon everything else that we've seen, where, where we believe that those five easy payments are gonna be coming from. That's, that's a lot of money, given, given all the other obligations that we're facing, so.
This is a project that I would be willing to take something off the capital improvement program to allow it to happen, because we're making a decision that is so long-lasting, it can't be undone if we choose to not do it now. So if we don't have the $600,000 for the payment, the first payment, then I would say that, you know, it would be well worth reorganizing the capital improvement program and taking a project off, then, I mean, I don't see an option in that, why would you make a decision that it will last for 100 years when you have a chance to do something like this? So I'd rather see a project go by the wayside than to allow something like this to slip through our fingers and, you know, make us, making decisions for that long of a period of time that can't be undone, you can't, you can't undo this.
I, I think that's a, that's a great suggestion, searching for an offset. If we go ahead and vote on this tonight, then that makes that much more difficult to, to attain, but I think it's a good idea, and I, I started looking through the CIP and our other obligations for, for such, for just such a reason, and it, it occurred to me that we're gonna be making payments for a parking garage that are totaling $600,000 per year.
Well, that ship's kind of already sailed, so, you know, we've got development agreements in place that are based on that being there, so I don't see that as being an option. What I would see as being an option is.
And those payments come from TIF money that's guaranteed by the Iowa West Foundation, so it's not money that's coming out of this year's budget, doesn't correlate to this year's budget, it correlates to the construction down there, and oh yeah, by the way, we've got now a condominium developer who's interested that we didn't have when we made that agreement, so.
Well, if Iowa West is willing to help us out with the bridge construction, maybe they're willing to help us out with the $600,000 payments on the garage for five years, I, I just, throwing that out there is a possible offset.
So you'd take the TIF money out of the Playland district and use it in a completely different district for this purpose, is that what you're saying?
No.
Because that's where the money's coming from, is from the TIF district, so.
Well, we're, we're also.
How is that gonna change the money available for this project?
We've also made a payment in, in excess of $2 million upfront to aid in the construction of that, I don't know if that payment's already been made.
Payment has. Payment has been made.
I think he was saying Iowa West could help with this bridge deal.
Matt, so, didn't you say you asked if they'd be looking at an interest-free loan if we had to?
I broached the conversation with the president of the Iowa West Foundation, who obviously doesn't speak for the whole board, but
No.
He said that they, he felt that it was important enough, they'd be interested in helping how they could.
Yeah, because their their main focus is West Broadway, the riverfront and
I I'm just trying to find, you know, I I guess
The tough thing about it is it's, it's a New York second decision on a tough, expensive issue. I'm, I'm not going to tell you you're, you're right-minded on it.
Well, what concerned me is it just says a formal agreement we drafted later. I think we should might want to see that first. I know, I know it's
There isn't time.
The two weeks.
Literally, I have to call them tonight and tell them what's happening because their plans have to be a hundred percent done March first. So, there's just, I I apologize for the situation.
It's not anything we did. Again, we told them no at ten billion.
Because the entire interstate is a house of cards, you know, reconstruction. And if they delay this project, it delays another one and another one, another one. And and those delays cost money. So, again, the agreement's going to say what, it'll have the normal DOT boilerplate. You know, we agree to comply with all federal laws. And we agree to repay in five installments, starting upon completion of the bridge. It is tough. And, you know, you're right, there's, something's going to have to give. But I'm I'm confident that we'll find something in the CIP that we can work around.
We have to speak for
I don't, I'm not sure I'm that confident because, you know, as the the discussion we're already having, you know, each, each project has its own individual characteristics. And to make a promise now, well, we're going to cover this bill, but we'll make it right later on. Gosh, I think I've heard that from government a whole lot in my lifetime. And and I'm, I I would kind of like to have a better idea of where we can make those offsets before we approve this agreement and these payments instead of after. In reviewing, in reviewing the the CIP, I notice, you know, we're we're contributing three and a half million dollars to a pavilion and water park down in the riverside edge development. That would more than pay for this particular project now, so I
Did you identify anything that wasn't in the riverfront corridor that we could cut? I mean, I know that's been a project you've been against from the beginning, so I know it's an easy place to go.
No, I focus on that.
Did you find anything else that we could cut?
I focus on those because of the large dollar amounts for those projects. I mean, we're we're trying to cover three million dollars here for this idea, so we have to come up
You don't think maybe we could find three million dollars somewhere other than the riverfront development that will bring tax base onto our tax rolls? There's a road we could not do, is there a park we could not do? Because, you know, we've all seen this over the years. I mean, at one point, we were really getting ready to launch Fairmont Park and we had an opportunity. We had to redo Twenty-Fourth Street. We had no options or we weren't going to get the development. So, we just said, no, we can't do Fairmont now. I'm sure that there's some other project besides the one that, you know, is going to actually bring Well, I asked you, you you were saying you went through and I'm I'm assuming
I, I have been.
You looked in other areas besides just the Playland for cuts.
Sure, sure.
And they were?
Library carpet?
Well, I know, I was wondering about that. I do this before I do library carpet. Sorry, Kathy, but I can do library carpet next year. I can't make a decision after today to put a road in, so.
That's two hundred thousand dollars. When that, now we, now we have, what, another?
Two point eight.
Yeah.
I mean, everybody, I I realize it's a hard decision. I know everybody has to make their own decision on it. I guess I just, I I don't see where there's any question that we have to do the right thing and allow future development of this property that will never have a road to it if we don't. You know, I don't see any way that you're ever going to develop, say, the rubble dump without this road. And that's valuable, valuable property that could add tax base at some point. And if we don't do this, well, I don't know that I want to own it. I mean, the whole point of tax base is somebody else owning it and developing it.
Harris paying taxes on it right now?
You don't understand what I'm saying.
Right, but I just mean it's still on the tax roll right now.
At some point, you would want it to be developed, right?
If they're willing to sell it, they might not want to sell it ever.
Well
I mean, maybe they want to get rid of it today. I don't know.
Okay, value is highest in best use, you know, and highest in best use of a riverfront parcel. If Playland takes off, it's not going to be a rubble dump. I know there's a lot of what ifs, but what I, I guess what I'm saying is, how do you, how do you say no today with three million dollars, knowing you can't now ever change your mind? You can't say, well, Playland's sold out, the tax base is great, we need to develop over here, but there's no way to do it because there's no road. I mean, I don't understand that.
I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just having a conversation about it.
I don't know what's so difficult. This is three million dollars, we're broke. I don't, don't know where we're going to find the money.
Well, I mean, just going to your military sensibilities. I mean, the military is consistently doing things for the future in order to stay ahead of the game, right? So, you guys spend, the military spends money to design new aircraft. And they spend money that, you know, they're telling us they're broke and raising our taxes. But in order to do the right thing and to have a plan for future defense, they keep doing that, right?
But that money's appropriated for planning purposes. This money's not appropriated. We're not even to, to that point.
You do know that we didn't know about it in time to plan for it?
I do, but it's still not appropriated. We have no idea where we're going to find it. We have no idea how much this road is going to cost us. We just don't know.
Well, a lot of, a lot of it, these are all good points. They are. A lot of it
Let's hear it, Justin.
There, there's also, if we're looking at CIP long-term, there's a fire station that's in the CIP, I think, to four million dollars that completely depends on the development of both the riverfront and the fieldhouse area. If we don't see growth there, we will push the fire station back. So, there's four million dollars there if that's in the CIP, if I'm correct. Eight? Oh, eight million dollars. So, we build fire stations because there's demand. If we don't have growth in that area, will we have a little bit more demand than we have today? Yeah, probably. Will it push a fire station when that, when that comes? This is a super important project to the city. Our, our, and from a fire chief's standpoint, our growth, the the cost of running a fire department is not going downhill. The cost of running a police department doesn't seem to be going downhill. And so, if we don't continue to grow, and this is our one bargaining chip to really, we have so much to offer on the riverfront. If developers are showing interest there, we need to do what it takes to get the job done.
Sure, I understand. And when it comes time for that fire station, that'll be part of the advocacy for that. That'll be necessary because that would have to go to a referendum of the voters in order to get those bonds issued.
Not for, for eight million?
Yes.
Anything over seven hundred and fifty thousand today.
But I thought that
Legislature may change that tomorrow.
Maybe, okay. I guess I thought fire stations were the one that
I don't think they're an essential corporate purpose. As strange as that sounds.
Yeah, I, I don't know why I thought they were.
Well, because logic.
I know, but I know better than to try to use logic.
Well, fair enough.
Well, it, I mean, I can't tell you that the timing's not horrible, but it is an important enough project that we felt it essential to bring it to you at a horrible time. Anything else on that one? Anything else on the resolutions?
Have we, is the rock crushing company here by chance?
I don't think so.
I don't think
So, they do have a SWIP that they're working on, but it's not, yeah.
So, following the last council meeting, Public Works, myself and the Public Health Department met with Mr. Wells, who was here representing Sean Nagus Construction. Last time we met with them and I believe discussed through the issues to his satisfaction, at least leaving that meeting. I have not heard from him since with the revised staff report. But basically, what he advised us in that meeting is that he already had an engineering, an engineer working on a SWIP previous to even our conversation. I don't believe that's been submitted yet, but it is in the works. The discussion was that the storm water that would need to be addressed could be addressed through the SWIP likely, but we have not seen that yet. It's my understanding there was some material that had already left the site and that that would be cleaned up, that they would improve and surface the approaches, the entries into the property, but that as staff, we were not asking that the main circulation paths be paved as we would with a permanent use. And a salvage yard license would be required. To my knowledge, as we all left that room, they were agreeable to those issues and I have not heard to the contrary. We also, one of the other discussion points was because they don't know with subcontracts, they might be crushing on-site within DOT right of way. We know they intend to finish the pile that's there this fall on-site. But that as location, if haul routes needed to change, if they did start hauling back in from other subcontracts, that they would make us aware of those changes as they occurred.
So, are they asking, are they still asking for a next, a five-year extension or whatever it was?
Just to the end of the year. Just through the end of the calendar year. They they indicated to us, as they did here, that to complete the material that is there, they anticipate doing that in the fall to correspond with with something they know they have going. If they bring on other contracts, they are expecting right now that those are probably done more on on location on-site. They likely wouldn't have a need for this property, but if they did, they would, you know, be coming back to us and talking about changing haul routes and things, so.
Is there any sort of air quality permits or anything like that that they need to require?
Not specifically for us. We do have some dust control. And they were explaining that actually the crusher that they will use on-site is, Don could probably speak to it better, but it it's a much newer, modern, probably has more dust control than than we've had on others.
That are running.
Yeah.
During.
And early on, I met with the people that that run the paint and solvent business just across the road. And said, gosh, yeah, if there's a dust, that's a real problem for for you guys. And and they said, no, they felt, they felt comfortable with how business was was being done. And not to introduce any hearsay here, but I did, I did speak with with them over the weekend. And and they felt as though that they had, that they could, that this all was workable, as you indicated. And they also expressed appreciation and thanks to you and the other city staff for working with them to talk this through and and come into accommodation, so, so good job.
Maybe we should put, at the end of 2017, everything needs to be cleaned up?
Yeah, there is. We do have some standard that says site remediation, you know, to the, to the current
December thirty-first, yeah, okay.
Yeah. And so, if they would come back and extend it, we would address that. But yes, otherwise, it says that basically it needs to be in the state it was before they worked there. And I suspect that's also in their lease with their, the landowners.
How it hopes.
Dick, on the previous topic, do you have any idea when the McGee Harrington settlement's paid out?
I think we have
Next year.
Three more?
Oh, yeah, we've only had two, haven't we?
I'm glad I don't have to write that deck. It would burn me every time.
All right. Anything on the permits? I'll ask a question earlier and I'm not sure I accurately answered it. As to no changes anticipated in that budget. There is no changes in the budget if the legislature doesn't change it for us. And so, I asked Dick today because we kind of thought when you received and filed it, it was in place and couldn't be amended. And so, Dick, can you kind of?
Yes, the, essentially, it's the, you can't change it once you've, it, it's the budget that goes to the public hearing is the one that cannot be changed.
Right.
Coming in tonight, the council can still tweak it.
Yeah.
And send it on to public hearing. And if the final public hearing is also there. So, we, if we got in a position at the next meeting where we really weren't where we wanted to be, we could make an amendment, set a second public hearing on the thirteenth day of March and have our final hearing there. And we, but we pretty much have to have our final package coming out of the meeting on the twenty-seventh.
And so, my, and I, when we met with you individually, I told each one of you this scenario. If the state amends the automatic traffic enforcement in, in a best case, sounds like today, although the, they said there would be tweaks made to the bill. But the current bill says that any revenue needs to go to the road use tax. I may recommend, and it's entirely your decision on where you want to go, that we take some of that road use money to pay the benefits of road use employees, lower that levy, and then use the convention and arena levy of thirteen and a half cents to recapture some of that revenue that went to road use tax. It would have a net, no effect on the taxpayer from what's been proposed, but would be a change that Dick indicates that we could make if we find out more. There's two bills on the floor of the Senate today. One that Zahn has proposed that completely eliminates automatic traffic enforcement. Capuchin has a bill that would allow it under certain circumstances, grandfathering approval of the DOT. When I was up there last week, they talked that that they thought some of those things would change in Capuchin's bill. Zahn and Capuchin have met and talked about commonalities and differences of their two bills. And so, we don't know what's going to come out, but we hope it would come out in time between now and the next council meeting, that if we need to adjust, we can adjust.
After the budget's submitted to the state
The other option is, because I'm getting faces, the other option is to simply lay off seven hundred thousand worth of employees, because that's our only other option.
Could we, assuming the budget
Well, unless you've got another option, I'm certainly willing to listen to it, but
If if we
Yes, you 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 will. I'm sorry, Nate.
No, you're, you're fine. If if we certify the budget and meet the state deadline of of March fifteen and then, for whatever reason, and whether we agree with it or not, we we get less money from the state, presumably, we are obligated then to amend the budgets because we're, I do not believe we have the authority to spend more money than we have. Is that right?
But we can't change the levies either, so.
We can't change the levies. So, we we could only cut spending, we couldn't increase revenue. Is that a fair statement?
We could increase revenue and spending, but not associated with the levies.
No, not with the levy. Okay, thank you.
So, we could get a government grant. That would increase the revenue.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Spend the money on the grant.
That's a good point. Thank you.
But we can't change the levies once you certify the budget.
Okay.
So, so that brings me back, that being the case, that we would have to come back and do an amendment and some adjustments. I guess that brings me back to a point that I raised with you in our, in our meeting, Mr. Mayor. And that is, would it not be more prudent for us to err on the side of caution, assume that that money is not going to be there? And then, if if it does end up being there, then it it's easier to to add, make adjustments, put it in the bank than it is to try and find cuts and adjustments because we shouldn't have predicted that we would have the money to begin with, I
Well, you know, I've certainly thought that process through. First of all, there are two bills out there. I don't know which one is going to come out of legislation, if either of them are. And the one bill is a seven hundred thousand, money's gone bill. And so, there's no use making those changes if that's the bill that happens because the revenue's gone and there isn't any potential alternative revenue source in another area. The other bill would move the money from the general fund to the road use tax. And again, we pay the employee benefits out of the general fund. And by law, we could pay it out of the road use tax. And so, we, we're kind of waiting to see what they are going to do. The, if we, if the Zahn bill passes, which completely eliminates automatic traffic enforcement, forcing the road use tax people to pay the employee benefits when it doesn't really provide any alternative financial benefit to the city, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But, but, you know, I'm trying to be nimble and in but you know, I'm trying to be nimble and, and react when, when the legislature does whatever they're going to do, and, and I don't know what, if anything, they're going to do. They're, they're going like Sherman through the south, and, and they're giddy with unbound checks and balances up there, and they're running around the hallways, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. It, it's an interesting time that I've never seen before. Home rule's gone, they're taking away rights that cities had before, and, I don't know, and, and as Scott Belt used to say, I don't have a crystal ball, I don't know what they're going to do, but...
Right. Well, in fairness, they're trying to balance their, their budget, as are we at the same time, and I guess that just, to me, raises the question if we're, if we believe that that 700,000 is already at risk, why are we counting on having that, that money there and making plans to spend it, and then having to come back later on and make adjustments the other way? That's, that's simply my point.
Well, and I gave you my answer, and you said you had an alternative, and I'm still listening to the, for the alternative. The answer is that we have run, we think, just about everything out of that budget we can wring out of it for this year. And so now it gets to the point of jobs, and, you know, if, if the deal is to ignore the 704,000 dollars that we put in there for camera revenue, then you divide it by approximately 75,000 dollars per employee and, and do the math. And, and at this point, I'm not willing to give up on the employees that quick, but, you know, and you're laughing, but that's, that's a harsh reality of it.
No, I, I, I don't think it's a question that we, we have to make this adjustment, and the only possible revenue-saving measure is to fire employees. I, I think that's, that's a bit of a political stretch, and it's a, it's a, but it's typically used, I understand that point, but at the same time-
My only other solution's to find a leprechaun.
Well, I think that there's plenty of money in, in that budget, and we'll be, we'll be getting into those details, obviously, when we, when we start concerning the, the budget and having the public hearings on it. Which, all this discussion, I guess, raises another point. We were talking about legislation pending that could have impact upon our budget, and I guess the, the other question, we also have legislation concerning collective bargaining, binding arbitration, as well as health, health benefits. And, and with regard to, to the collective bargaining and binding arbitration, we're proposing that we enter into a three-year contract for the police and fire department, and we'll apply tho, that pay increase to the non-union employees as well, so we're in effect locking ourselves in here for, for three years. I'm wondering at this point if that's a prudent thing to do. I realize that negotiations have been underway, and that there's a timeline for doing those negotiations, but if there's a realistic opportunity that we, that we could be looking at different rules for labor negotiations, I'm, I guess I'm kind of wondering, is this now the right time to be locking in that, that pay increase for three years?
Well, we negotiate in good faith, the unions negotiate in good faith, the bill that's moving through Congress says, or through Congress, through the Iowa legislature, says that if, if the term of those agreements exceeds five years, that we shouldn't move forward. These are three-year agreements. You know, I, I think that, that our employees negotiate in good faith. We did too. We're not fixing the non-union employees for three years. They, they're pegged off that number, but, so, they may get that. We like to give them that so that they don't feel that, that their job is, and pay increases, the past administration would give less than what the unions got. I don't know that that benefits anybody from doing that, but that's not my intent to do that. But my position is that we negotiate in good faith with them, and I think we should follow through on our word, but...
Well, and, and that's fair, and I, I'm by no means questioning that. I guess my point is, you know, that as we discuss these, these things, anytime you enter into public sector union negotiations, that the 800-pound gorilla in the room is always the binding arbitration. And it's always the, the implicit threat that unless you give a, a standardized increase that has been found acceptable by other municipalities, that you're going to end up paying for it in binding arbitration. So that's always led to this cycle of, of pay increases that don't necessarily track with actual expenses or, or labor market forces. So that's the only reason I, I raised the question, is whether, whether that, not that that had come up in any of the pre-negotiation or post-negotiations and, and bringing this to-
Well, no, it didn't, because, again, this thing's like Sherman through Atlanta. I mean, there, it, it wasn't on the table a week ago, and, and it's being fast-tracked so that people don't have, in the legislature, don't have time to read it, so the press doesn't have time to react to it, so the unions don't have time to react to it. So it wasn't a, a deal where we said, oh, we've known this was coming forever, because...
Well, it wasn't filed till, till just recently. I mean, but it's, it's been, it's been a topic of, of political conversation for, for some time.
Governor talked about it, talked about insurance pools.
Okay, I'm just, just asking.
Valid questions.
Don't they, as I understand it, and I, and I could be wrong, I, I don't have as much time as I would like to, to study the proposals and, and the competing proposal, proposals, and they keep changing from what little time I'm able to devote to reading them. But I, I don't think the current proposals, at least in this respect, affect public safety officers. Now, certain, certain parts of the bill, I believe, do affect some of the chapters, but I haven't had time to read it in depth, but just my superficial read, but, but I, I don't think, and for, for whatever reason, I have my suspicions, but for whatever reason on that point, I don't think it affects these.
They carved out the public safety.
Yeah, it's not as dramatic. It's not as dramatic for public safety. They, they did separate non-public safety and public safety, and the two contracts that we negotiated are both public safety.
Kind of. Granted, we don't, we don't employ prison staff.
But they define what public safety is. And police and fire both fall out of scope, and that's, that's the two contracts that we negotiated.
Are EMTs included too?
Again?
EMTs are not included either, are they? No, not in the version I read. They're not considered public safety workers. For that per- EMTs, they're just firefighters, from what I understand. Police. And police officers. And, and park wardens are also considered public safety employees for some reason.
I couldn't, I don't remember the specifics of who all is defined as public safety or not what I remember. The two contracts that we negotiated-
Sure.
Generally, the, the population that are covered are the public safety.
Define the answer there, you just have to look to political-
And, and there are some changes potentially for, for them if the legislation passes, but it isn't as dramatic as it is for the non-public safety.
And as Wendy says, for our, ours are, there's not a firefighter and an EMT that are set.
Right. They're all cross-trained.
Correct, all of our EMTs are firefighters.
Yep.
Any other questions for John? They're strange times, I'm telling you.
Yeah, I mean, to your point, I'll literally, when I put this on the agenda, the legislation wasn't there. So this one on the agenda, and the communication came to you guys before the legislation was even out, so.
We knew it was coming.
I don't think anybody knew what was coming.
I, I didn't know what was coming, but you can ask either of the groups that we negotiated with. I told them I wanted to wait until January, and, and they both graciously accepted that during negotiations. Sure, we'll give you some more time to wait and see what's coming. And I said, you know, early January, mid-January, and they're like, you know, we really can't wait much past that. We have to have a contract signed before March 15th as well. So they said, we can give you some time, and they were both gracious in that regard, knowing that it might come up, but obviously, the timing is later, and really pushed us to the 11th hour of being able to do anything, so.
No reflection upon them, your staff.
They were, they were great with that. We, we did discuss that within the, with the negotiations, so.
Really, they need to change it to where your budgets aren't due until the session closes, because especially a year like this just really magnifies that, because, you know, as long as the session's open, anything can change between now and then. I mean, they could, even though they say they're not going to, they could turn around and decide to do a clawback on our, our backfill money, and so, you know, it, they're asking us to submit a budget before we have any clue what their final session's going to look like.
Well, if that happens, their number will-
Well, and I would like them to take the time to read and understand the bills that are in front of them, and I don't think that's going to happen. I think they're just going to, if you say you need to do it before our budgets do, okay, it's passed, you know, so.
We're in the unfortunate position of being required to follow the state laws for timing. They ignore them, and that, that has been frankly a bipartisan problem for quite some time, ramped up significantly currently, but...
On that, I'm not saying they should have, vote on this before we do our budget, I'm just saying they need to just make the state law to where the budget's not due till the session closes.
Yeah.
Because it's not just this issue, we don't know what else is going to come out of this.
Or the schools, really.
Thank you.
Jody.
So Sharon and I met with John last week about the new position for our office, the administrative secretary that will replace me when I replace Marcy. So the process of that, I gave you all some handouts on that, and unless you have any questions, that's kind of how we'll follow things.
I had one quick question. So next Friday is when application says to be, has it already been put out?
The 24th, yeah, it's up, so, yeah, a week from this Friday.
Yeah, so-
It's already posted, yes.
Okay. How, like, when did it get, have we had any?
Yes, we're getting a lot of interest.
Let's just make sure, is that long enough for you guys to get, okay, so that's-
Yeah.
It's actually a position that sometimes is a coin toss. Sometimes you get a lot of interest, sometimes you almost get none, and we're actually getting a lot of interest, so.
Okay, perfect, that was my question.
Everyone likes me, I think.
Everybody wants to work with you.
Then they should work for free.
I don't know that they like me that much.
Got to have some, they don't like you that much, what?
So I'd ask Jody to, like, make sure that everybody was comfortable with the way it was going, because what's going to happen, I'm a little nervous. Jody goes on vacation the end of April, so, you know, if there's a change, whoever, you know, if, if Marcy's gone, she's going to have to train somebody to be in place, it's time to get this ball rolling with at least identifying who's available for this job. And in the past, Marcy has made the decision on who that final hire was and made the hire, so assuming that it would be that way with Jody, but I want to make sure everybody was comfortable, because she may not have time to come back, you know. It hasn't been in the past where the council has, you know, voted on her hire, but I just want to make sure that that's the way you guys want to proceed with it.
Stick with President.
Yeah, I think the way I've been doing it's-
And to that end, this, this process is really a pretty standard process that we use for hiring most people. Do you look at any, any of our civil service procedures that's very much like this? It's rare for the interview team of Sharon, Jody, and Mallory, our recruiter, will be involved in the interview. It's rare for them to, to not go, hey, here are the top two or three, and really, probably, again, as much interest as we're getting, there's probably going to be two or three that you'd really be successful with any of them, and it's really going to come down to, Jody, which one do you really want as the best candidate? I, I would guess we'll have more than one that's going to be able to be successful in the role.
I mean, obviously, Jody's the one that's going to be in the office with the other person all the time, and there's only two, so I wouldn't want to underestimate she couldn't work well.
Yeah, and that, that's always key, because having that person in place in time, because we, we have to be very mindful that with, with, got to be, well, it's got to be the smallest department in numbers. I can't think of any other department that only has two, two individuals, and we, we have that legal duty to have the office open, so, so that people can file their, their papers. And the, the number of things that the clerk's office has been required to do over the last century and a half, and I'm not exaggerating, has been added to particularly in the last 50 years, is just mind-boggling what the clerk's office is expected to keep track of. Some things that make no sense, frankly, but, again, in their wisdom and Des Moines have decided.
If push does come to shove, there was a resolution passed by the council several years ago, which essentially has the City Attorney Act in the state of the city clerk, and for some reason, they were not available.
Oh, boy, so Dick can run that.
Oh, boy. Are you volunteering?
The pressure will be on to make sure you guys get a job.
Yeah, that's right.
My vacation at the end of April-
You know he's giving full and frank advice when it's against his own interest.
My vacation at the end of April is over at council meeting. And of course, that was long before we made these changes, so.
Yeah.
So unless anyone has any questions, that's it for me.
Thanks, Jody.
Have a good evening, guys, I'm leaving.
See you.
All right, anything else on the agenda?
Leave executive.
We're going in.
And I'd just like to say, when, when we had meetings with each of you, we said, you know, if you have questions, comments, concerns, please get them to us. I'm not an expert in putting together a budget, you know, the statement, wait till the public hearing opens, and I'll give you some ideas. It really, I could use help rather than criticism. I'm, I'm not an expert, and I'm willing to adjust accordingly. If you, if you want to play big surprise with me, I guess that's fine, but I, I think it just works better if, if we work together rather than work against each other, so.
And with Sharon, the hard thing is it is too bad that we can't find, you know, it's like, it's hard when you have such, I mean, what do we do when we have a lot of uncertainty right now, so we just have to do the best I can?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be really nice if you knew first what was really going to be our budget.
Well, if there's something in there that you think that, in that budget that you think could come out, let us know, and we'll look at it and talk about it and see if we can take it out, but...
Motion to go into executive session for purposes of litigation.
This is an appropriate topic for 21.5 of the Iowa code, and that we'll be discussing pending litigation.
Ted?
Aye.
Ringenberg?
Aye.
Sandow?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye.